It is 5:30 Monday, October 24th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First, we actually have School District 60 for a new school update. So can I please have Mr. Sprouse, Mr. Horner, and Mr. Lawson to the podium, please? District 60, whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair, Madam President, Council members, Mayor Gradisar, we couldn't be more excited or proud to sit before you this evening to talk about the amazing and big things happening in our school district. And I'm just here to tell you that D60 is back, and we're back in a big way. And a lot of that is attributed to our outstanding superintendent, Charlotte McCulluso, and these two gentlemen sitting here right beside me, Mr. David Horner, our CFO, and Mr. Bob Lawson, our Director of Facilities, Executive Director of Facilities. They have a presentation that we'd like to share with you. We'll conclude with a short video, and then we'll certainly entertain any questions that you may have, because we have a lot of exciting things to share with you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Lawson, Executive Director for, oh, sorry. Bob Lawson, Executive Director of Facilities for District 60. I'm going to just recap some talking points to get the council up to date on where we're at on our... In 2019, Pueblo voters were gracious in approving a $218 million capital bond improvement project for the district. The purpose of that was to construct two new high schools and make very needed repairs at 11 other schools. The district wanted to emphasize the use of local contractors and vendors. To date, roughly 80% of the contractors working on our projects are from Pueblo and Southern Colorado. And the idea is to improve the, and extend the useful life of our school buildings. Over 80% of our buildings are 60 and 70 years old or more. Most of our buildings were built in the 1950s. We've only had two buildings constructed since the 1980s. And so we were getting a little long in the tooth in our buildings. They were really starting to show their age. And without the voters' help, it would have been very difficult for the district to continue forward, keeping 30 buildings open. Some of the bond projects going on, we, and I'll kind of touch on all of this in more detail, but we have five new schools being constructed. About 90% of our bond projects are presently under contract. We have the last two out as procurements on the street right now for the last two remaining projects to get under contract. We expect all projects to be completed by the fall of '23. Many of these needed repairs had to do with HVAC systems, electrical systems, plumbing, roofing replacements, door hardware to get us code compliant with the new fire codes. And many of them also included site work, such as site utility improvements. In addition to the bond, we were very fortunate in being able to use ESER grant funds to replace HVAC systems at four more schools that we would not have been able to do without those grant funds. We are going to be adding air conditioning, heating, these are new VRF systems. But we'll be adding those to Heat Middle School, Belmont Elementary, Bradford Elementary, and South Park Elementary Schools. Key elements in the bond were that, was that the district was going to construct two new high schools to replace Centennial and East High School. Both were in very, very poor condition, had structural issues, as well as numerous issues within the building's infrastructure. The new buildings are designed and constructed to be highly energy efficient. We're using some of the most energy efficient equipment in the buildings from our lighting, use of daylighting, our HVAC systems, our water conservation measures. And so these buildings are going to be as green as we could possibly get them. They have 21st century learning environments. This is really what education is building around now and for the future. It's a little bit different. It's a very interactive and highly tech, highly, high use of technology. I apologize. High use of technology in these buildings, far more than what we presently can provide. They also include career technical education or CTE labs. Both schools have unique CTE programs that we're going to be able to support. And both schools, the high schools are scheduled in next fall of '23, so next August they will be open. Some of the highlights about the high schools is there are 185,000 gross square foot. They're designed for 1,100 students with the capacity to expand out to 1,200. They have full-size competition gymnasiums and auxiliary gyms. They have performance auditoriums proceeding up to 500. They have community rooms, and then, as I mentioned, the distinct CTE programs. And they both will have onsite productions where they will be preparing the meals for a number of other schools. Typically, Centennial will provide all the breakfast and lunch meals for the northern quadrant. East would be on the entire east quadrant is what they'll be providing meals for. That's in addition to the summer lunch programs that they support each year. I have some visuals here of what the new school will look like. This is the frontal view of the new Centennial. Jump to slide. Here's an overhead view. The old Centennial, the current Centennial building sits down in the southeast corner of this rendering. The new school is set up in the northwest corner. It was located this way because of, the site has extremely high groundwater. So we had to move the building for the new construction to that northwest corner. As part of the problem, what happened to the old building is very high water table underneath that building, and it caused a number of structural issues. The only thing remaining from the existing school is the football field and the tennis courts. Those will be reconditioned and then reused on the new school sites. And then this is a view of East High School. It now faces Constitution. The old school sits where you see the football field here. And then the tennis courts will be reconditioned and reused as well. Everything else on this site will be new. We have two new elementary schools under construction. We were able to start the projects with these. Originally, we had funds set aside to repair Sunset Park and Franklin Elementary. Those funds were significant repairs, and they still didn't completely renovate the buildings. They would have been partial renovations only. So what Colorado offers through Department of Education, a best grant. We applied for the best grants, leveraging the funds that we had existing in the bond for the repairs against our matching requirement for the best grant. About 70% of the cost of these two buildings is being buried by the state. We only have about a 26% match that we have to meet to achieve these two new high schools. Oh, I'm sorry, elementary schools. Both of the elementaries are about 451 student capacity and about 55,000 square feet. They are also designed to be highly energy efficient with 21st century learning, and they will also open in the fall of '23. There's a rendering of the front of Sunset Park. The school, the new school sets directly behind the existing school on University. If you go by that area, you'll see it being constructed there. These schools, the building construction will wrap up in April of '23, and then we will start demolition of the old building and the site work after that. But the schools will open for the August '23 school year. Franklin is a rendering of the front of that building. And with this one, it sets behind the old building as well, a little farther into that large playground area with the entry now on the south side of Horseshoe Drive. With the savings that we achieved in our bond program, we were very fortunate in getting many of our projects underway before the enormous escalation occurred. We also had significant additional funds to our, our bond having higher yields than we expected. And with that, we were able to, we saw the need on the north side of Pueblo with a, for a new K-8 school. We had lost the old former Freed Middle School due to major condition issues such as electrical and structural there as well. And so we're able to move forward with a new Nettie S. Freed Expeditionary K-8. This school, again, like the others, is going to be highly energy efficient. It is also built around 21st century. Unique feature, though, is this includes expeditionary. This is a first for District 60. Expeditionary learning is a little bit different model than what we've used traditionally. There's a lot of interaction involved in the classrooms, as well as the introduction of career technical education at a much earlier grade level. This school will also open in the fall of '23. The new Nettie S. Freed School will house about 675 students. It's about 78,000 square feet. We anticipate opening next fall with kindergarten through sixth grade is our, and then at a future time within probably a couple of years, we'll add seventh and eighth grade as well. There's a rendition. It will sit on 20th Street, right above the old former Freed School building. And here's a conceptual rendering of how that building will look. It's a much different type of a structure than what we're used to here. It's not the long hallway and links. It's a, they work in pods with grade groups working in pods so the teachers and students can interact. It's a very unique design, and we're very excited to add this to our district is one of the new schools.
And with that, before we show this video, I want to just thank Council President Heather Graham for joining us at this special event that we had. One of the unique things that we've done is provide topping out ceremonies. And topping out means it's the final steel beam that's placed in the structure of the school marking about the halfway point of completion. And here, most recently, we held an event over at Franklin School of Innovation, and I just want to encourage you to enjoy this video with me. Thank you. There's nothing more exciting to me, and I'm sure you share in my excitement, than the pure joy rushing over the faces of our young students and our talented staff. We set out with a goal when we passed this bond of over-delivering on our promises. We promised two new high schools in that bond that was overwhelmingly passed in this community. The largest bond that this community has ever passed. Now we're producing five schools, and it didn't happen because of luck. It happened because of hard work and diligent planning. We used ESER funds to match things to help us provide more AC in our schools. We used best grants to help us complete two brand-new elementary schools. And we were efficient and very advantageous in our sales of the bonds at premiums at the right time so that we could build a fifth new school. In addition to that, we're extremely excited about the partnerships that have come along, about this community supporting us. I believe this community sees that over 80% of the people that are working on these schools are Pueblo people, Pueblo contractors and Pueblo people. There's a lot of organizations out there that talk about bringing jobs to Pueblo. Well, guess what? We did it. We're doing it. We're not just talking about it. We actually are doing it. We're making a big impact in this community, and we couldn't be more proud of the work that's happening. In addition to that, Urban Renewal has now come onboard with us to make some major enhancements to Dutch Clark Stadium, which will also happen fall of 2023. So as we celebrate our 150th year anniversary as a school district in the state of Colorado, we're going to be doing so by cutting ribbons at five new schools and making major improvements to the greatest stadium in the state of Colorado, and one that's one of the top, if not after we're done, the top in the entire country for high school sporting events. I want to thank you for your time, and we would welcome any questions you may have at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Sprouse, Mr. Lawson, and Mr. Horner for that presentation, and congratulations to D60 for five new schools. What questions are there from council? Councilor Forrest?
I don't have a question. I just, I just wanted to congratulate you, your team, and your superintendent, and of course, all of your staff. I don't, you know, I understand probably very well, I mean, how you guys generated as much as you did out of the amount of the bonds. I just, you know, I just have to lodge you for that, because I don't think anybody expected, you know, three additional schools to come out of the original bond, the way it was presented. So whatever it was, you know, magic dust or whatever. But I want to thank you on behalf of the city for, you know, producing such a great environment for our kids and just, you know, leveraging the ability to leverage with other grants that were available. So I just want to congratulate you for doing such a great job. I did have one question. You know, we've bounced around with trying to put together an aquatic center, which would have an Olympic-sized pool. And I know that, I'm just curious to know, I think in the raising of both East and Centennial, did we lose two pools or one pool? And...
Yes, Mr. Lawson can add to this, but both Centennial and East will no longer have a pool. We see a lot of school districts. In fact, our neighboring school district shares a pool. Pools are extremely expensive to maintain. Certainly, if the city were to come onboard with an aquatic center, then maybe we can leverage some partnerships there and help our schools. But if you'd like, Mr. Lawson, to explain a little bit more in detail, he's happy to do so.
Yeah, I understand, you know, the cost and the liability too with the use of old pools that are no longer really safe. But I guess my ask is, at the appropriate time, if there's an opportunity, I would hope that District 60 would be open to discussing that with us and being, you know, part of the, you know, part of the planning and resourcing of, of an Olympic-sized pool that could really benefit all of our high schools and even some of our middle schools.
Sure.
Thank you.
You.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
I just wanted to say congratulations, and that was really cool when I got to be a part of that day, so thank you. And the kids were so excited. They had a cheer going on the whole time the beam was being put up. And you could see smiles on faces that they were excited that they get to have, you know, a new improved school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your successful projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did have a quick question. It was hard to tell from the map, but what's happening with the old East High School and the old Centennial High School?
We will start the demolition of both of those old buildings once the new buildings are open. They, they will both be raised. We have quite a bit of asbestos abatement to perform in both buildings. But then those schools, like I'd mentioned in those aerial views, the football field, it, the new football field at East will sit where the current building is. And then at Centennial, it's going to be the baseball fields, as well as part of that very beautiful drive that comes into the school. That's where the existing Centennial is now that will be coming down.
Sounds good. Well, I would love a brick from Centennial, from the old building. And I'm sure Councilman Atencio probably wants a brick from East High School, the old building. So if you can make that happen, that'd be great. Cool. Seeing no other questions or comments from council, thank you so much, School District 60, for that presentation, and a huge congratulations again on five new schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the end of the day, it's our students that win. And every decision we make in the administration, building district-wide, and from our Board of Education is to put students first in those decisions, and this is proof. Lastly, just Freed is opening their early enrollment process here November 15th. So in just a couple weeks, a couple weeks, students that are eligible in grades kindergarten through sixth can enroll at the very first brand-new Freed, Nettie S. Freed, I should say, Expeditionary K-8. So we're really excited about what's ahead of us, and we look forward to the challenges. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, School District 60. I just got a bunch of texts that they want bricks too from Centennial, so make that happen. The next on our agenda is a YMCA non-departmental budget request update. So can I please have Ms. Andrews, Mr. Plinsky, and Mr. Kilback to the podium, please? And just grab the chair. And I want to remind my fellow counselors that YMCA was asked here as a follow-up to our budget, mini-work, budget work sessions, as we're talking about the non-departmental budget. So YMCA, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name's Chanel Andrews. I'm the President and CEO at the YMCA. And with me is Dr. Plinsky and Mr. Kalback, who are also board members with the Y. And we appreciate the opportunity to come and share some of the impact that we've had over the past year, as well as the opportunity to partner with the city and like-minded partners to be stronger together. We'd like to start our presentation this evening with a brief video. It should be embedded. That's the link, otherwise. It's, it's not linking. Okay, we'll go through.
Let's say just, let's roll.
And we're just having some technical difficulties. So I appreciate everyone's patience.
Yeah.
This is the clicker.
We can just skip the video.
I bet it was great.
Well, we'll go ahead. As Janelle said, my name is Paul Plinsky. I'm the Vice President for Athletics and Strategic Partnerships at Colorado State University, Pueblo. And I am grateful and honored to be here representing the YMCA of Pueblo. I am a board member and have been so for the last five years. And with me is Kevin. We'll, we'll present here a little bit about the YMCA so you can feel for what we're all about, what we're doing to serve our community. So in case you're wondering, for the previous 20 years, the city has provided $200,000 annually to the Pueblo YMCA. We're asking that this can be continued in 2023. We feel that this investment, as you can see on this next slide, has tremendously impacted Pueblo and our branch that we have, but also Camp Jackson. In addition to that, we have over 105 individuals in Pueblo and the surrounding communities that are members of the YMCA, which equates to 1 in 10 city residents that are members. What we take pride in is the fact that this last year, we provided over $438,000 in financial scholarships to individuals from our community. So what are we all about? Our purpose as a Y is to do three things. And ultimately, it, the core of it is to strengthen our community. We do that through youth development. We do it through a healthy living, and then through social responsibility. And so, as you can see, go ahead with the next slide, but is with youth development, our emphasis is on childcare and daycare. We also do a lot with field trips. In fact, to partner with District 60, we had over 800 District 60 sixth graders come out to Camp Jackson this fall and had a wonderful experience on our grounds. We have over 2,100 individuals involved in our youth sport program. We have outdoor education, and then we are constantly using the Camp Jackson as a venue to develop our youth. In addition to that, we also are heavy into a healthy living. Over 1,700 older adults are using our facilities. They're also engaged in swimming on a daily basis. Uh, they're also engaged in swimming on a daily basis and uh, learning safety skills, but also learning how to actually do the skill set of, of swimming. And then lastly, is we have health and wellbeing classes that have served over ten thousand individuals from our community. And so, the impact that we're having is broad, but it would not be uh, without us saying that we have tremendous social responsibility. Uh, we have raised two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to contribute to that four hundred and thirty-eight thousand in scholarships that we provide to, to local youth. We have partnerships that range all the way to two hundred and thirteen community-based organizations. And then we have a number of collaborations that we do from the library district to Parkview Health Systems, to uh, District 60, 70, CSU Pueblo, uh, and the list is, continues to go on and on. And so, we value your long-term commitment, uh, which has built a tremendous facility for us. Uh, we feel we're incredibly open and accessible to all, and we look to, forward to continuing our partnership with you.
Well said. Thank you. I think it was on. Okay. Um, so following up on Dr. Polinsky's comments. First off, we, as the board at the Y, appreciate and completely understand the nuance of every funding request that comes before you all, um, especially, you know, philosophically, the city's approach to funding nonprofits, right? It's not a clear-cut, easy decision by any means. And with that said, those of us that serve on the Y, uh, you know, we're not only engaged advocates on behalf of the Y, but we're engaged advocates on behalf of the city. And as Paul just described, we're engaged advocates on meaningful, effective collaboration. And that's really the theme that we want to present tonight. Um, and we, when reviewing some of the themes and goals that council has voiced, um, as far as your goals, um, some things that come to mind. Creating strong partnerships within our community to recognize common goals and direction for the greater Pueblo community. Creating an atmosphere where citizens take pride in Pueblo, right? Uh, including celebrating diversity. Um, and then um, Counselor Atencio, when I look at you anywhere in town, I think, think big. Uh, you've, you've really branded that and I love it. And that is so much in line with what we're talking about here and how the Y can not only be a recipient of funds that makes sense and are efficiently used, but a collaborator and a partner with the city within those goals that you all have stated. So I'd like you to think of the Y as a citywide ecosystem leader. Um, bringing nationally recognized best practices to Pueblo and delivering services in a safe, healthy, um, and self, safe, healthy opportunities to Pueblo through the countless partnerships that were noted on some of those slides. Many of the organizations that come to you for help, the Y is already helping. And in effect, potentially relieving the burden of local government in so doing that. Um, a couple of just quick examples that might bring some of this to life is uh, Counselor Martinez Ortega, you know, in your district, I think Minnaqua is in your district? Yeah. Um, so you might know the, the Y is collaborating with the Pueblo City County Library District to bring uh, to uh, actually, let's see. Yeah, Unity Sports uh, to Minnaqua Elementary. That's quarterly sports, basketball, soccer, free to all participants. Let's see, uh, Counselor Atencio, in partnership with Pueblo City County Library District, uh, the Y is working to support after-school programming at the Patrick A. Lucero Branch. And that program brings after-school activities during that critical time when school's out to six PM. Potential uh, activities involve uh, babysitting courses that will include CPR and first aid, uh, movie nights, theme nights, things like that. Again, open to all east side kids. Um, so when we talk about the Y and supporting the Y, and what is an effective use of potentially discretionary funds from the city? Oh, the video's ready. We've got two minutes. I would just, I'll close on this and say, this, think of this as a way to enhance what the city is already trying to do and doing such a good job in so many ways, but with plug and play, proven national horsepower and infrastructure of the Y, it could make your job of running the city more collaborative and more effective in that regard. So we've got just a minute and a half left. Let's run a video. Thank you, guys.
Founded in eighteen eighty-nine, the YMCA of Pueblo has continuously evolved to best serve our community and provide a space for youth, families, seniors, and everyone in between to feel safe, welcomed, and supported. For over one hundred and thirty years, we've seen our share of challenges, but nothing like challenges that the global pandemic, racial injustice, and economic uncertainty brought. In twenty twenty, three-month government mandate shut down our facility, in-person programs stopped, and fundraising events were canceled. Member visits to the YMCA were down by eighty-four percent, and many people placed their memberships on hold. Camp Jackson did a run for the first time in its one hundred and six-year history. However, despite two years of challenges and uncertainty, our community partners, members, volunteers, and staff worked together to deliver the promise of strengthening our community. As one of the leading nonprofit charitable organizations in the nation, we seek to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in our programs and services. Through the generosity of donors, we are able to provide financial assistance and scholarships to ensure no one is turned away in ability to pay. In twenty twenty-two, we have awarded four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars in financial assistance. We've served four hundred and fifty-eight youth in our child development programs such as preschool and after-school care. Four hundred and ninety-six kids participated in Camp Jackson this past summer. We taught eight hundred and thirty swim lessons. We've had two thousand one hundred and sixteen youth participate in youth sports. And we currently serve over eight thousand active Y members. These dollars go even further. For over ten years, the YMCA of Pueblo has offered three year-round sixth-grade memberships to all students of Pueblo County, providing a safe place and positive role models. In addition to membership, we partnered with District 60 to provide over eight hundred youth with outdoor education at Camp Jackson. Those in grade seven through twelve can also take part in our good student discount if they bring a letter of recommendation from one of their teachers. The YMCA is located on one hundred and fifty acres on the northwest of Pueblo. Thanks to our partnership with the city of Pueblo, youth in the community have easy access to the Y. There is a Pueblo Transit bus stop in front of our parking lot, and all students ride for free until December twenty twenty-four. We've also partnered with Southern Colorado Youth Go, known as Socoyo Go. This youth-based platform is aimed at teens ages thirteen to eighteen and encourages them to visit pro-social locations, such as the Y, to earn seeds and chilies, which translates to rewards that can be redeemed at participating local businesses. Over the past year, like-minded partnerships have contributed to tremendous growth in all of our programs and membership. More families are connecting and making memories in person, and the community finally has the opportunity to thrive once again. We know that our mission is to lift up the most vulnerable among us, to nurture the healthy minds and bodies of everyone in our community, and to connect people to each other so that they can feel like the Y is truly a space where they can belong. We advocate for healthier ways of life. We encourage and protect the development of our youth, and we shoulder social responsibility. Thank you for your investment in this work and ensuring we keep our doors open for generations to come. Together, we can achieve so much more.
Happy to field questions.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, Dr. Polinsky, and Mr. Kilback. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Uh, when you talk about the scholarships you award, are those scholarships to families that can maybe not pay to be members at the Y and?
Sure. So our, how our financial assistance program works is anybody that um, can't afford um, program prices, they are on a sliding fee scale, so they submit an application. We have a sliding scale, um, as low as ten, they pay ten, pay ten percent of dues. So, um, depending the documentation, the story, there's a variety of variables that take place. Um, then we award scholarships and all Y programs and services from Camp Jackson, memberships, sports leagues, aquatics, anything and everything that's available at the Y.
And about how many, what's the percentage of your families that you see that need the scholarships in Pueblo?
One in three of our members is on some kind of financial assistance or subsidy.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Um, what kind of transportation do you all provide? Because it looks like you have great services in um, in those respective areas, uh, whether it's Minnaqua or the east side, uh, or like the Lucero Library, or all the way on the northwest side of Pueblo. What kind of transportation? Um, because I know that younger kids don't ride the um, the Pueblo bus, city bus, by themselves. Um, so what kind of uh, what kind of creative solutions are you coming up with to um, uh, address the transportation issue?
We do have a bus fleet. Um, we have six mini buses and a large passenger bus, um, that's available for support. We currently use small bus fleet to support after-school site pickup. So we pick up kids from a variety of schools throughout town and bring them back to the Y. And then have the opportunity, our, our goal with the new partnership at the Lucero Branches, that it would culminate in um, getting permission slip sign and then getting those kids transported over to the Y. So right now, we're bringing the Y to their community with the goal of having culminating activities that bring them to the Y. Um, we've done some stuff early on in the partnership with the city to try and have a set day and time where we would bring a Y bus and, and have kids come with their family members that those wouldn't be able to transport. And that just creates an opportunity for partnership. So trusted leaders in that area of the community that would encourage those to come alongside and um, come to the Y and participate in a great day of activities.
Sounds great. How do they get home?
Um, so we have the bus fleet that would be able to then return them pending the different programs or just take some strategic planning to get all that in place. But we do have vehicles and the staffing to support those vehicles for the need to ride and rise in variety parts of the community.
Do you currently provide transportation uh, from locations to home?
Uh, not from, not from home to the Y. No, sir. Just through the scheduled programming of the after-school sites.
Yeah, but you currently do that now?
Correct. The after-school sites, we do, correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Counselor Atencio?
Sorry, thank you. Um, about how many folks uh, use that transportation right now currently?
We aren't currently doing it for like just general access to the Y, um, but the after-school sites that we pick up and bring, we have about a hundred kids in our after-school site that we transport.
Okay, um, and you'd be open to some community members, that being like a local site for them if there's bus, bus space available?
We'd be open to supporting opportunities to get people transported.
Great, thanks.
Should be said that uh, you'll provide the buses on request also. If, if an organization or a group of people would want to go on a certain day or something and they wanted to, you would provide the, the buses. You did in the past.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's our stance that we would love to partner with any and all like-minded partners to ensure that we're stronger together. So how do we come together as a community to use the resources that we have? Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I was honored to be on the board for about three or four years. And during that time and even before uh, you provided scholarships to kids uh, to Camp Jackson. Twelve, fifteen scholarships every summer for um, the longest time that I can remember. Camp Jackson hasn't been open the last couple of years, has it?
No, we ran last year or prior, the year prior at fifty percent capacity. We had almost five hundred kids that were up there this summer.
Okay, well, I'll be glad to supply some more uh, kids to Camp Jackson the next summer. So uh, and, and working with your staff was great. They were so appreciative of uh, helping, helping out. So, and I was very appreciative also because those kids, they went to Camp Jackson. It was a thrill of a lifetime. They really got a lot out of it.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Yeah, thanks. I have one more. Um, how are you reaching the harder to um, the harder to reach areas uh, to let them know about your services? Like, I think about um, uh, Bessemer, um, east side, Dog Patch, the west side, closer to downtown. How do those folks find out about the services that are available at the Y?
I think we're currently heavily leaning on, on partners. So the, the, the service that we spoke to on the east side was a, a result of a partnership with a library and there being a void um, in the programming that they were able to offer at the library. And so they came to us and that's how that formed. Um, the partnership with Minnaqua Elementary was outreach through the, our partnerships with the school districts. And how do we, you know, a lot of kids, um, even if they want it, even providing the scholarship to sports, um, doesn't enable them to get to the Y if the parents don't have cars or unfortunately don't have caregivers that would get them to the Y. And so that's where we had the idea to bring the Y to them. And so we run the league there. So we lean heavily on those community like-minded partnerships, whether it's the school district, the library, Boys and Girls Club, to how do we figure out to come together and to serve our community?
That was my next question was, have you thought about um, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club uh, as they serve a lot of lower income? Uh, much uh, folks who are in need of those kind of services?
We currently do several things with them, um, with, they did scholarships, some sports leagues for them, sports teams for them, as well as sending kids to camp. So, all those conversations.
Great. And I have a cousin who swims there every morning. He loves it. And um, the low-income and folks who uh, need those scholarships are very appreciative. I do know that. Thanks for coming out here.
Other questions or comments from council? Well, I recognize Kevin Conno's voice from the video, and I think that he's the most positive person in all of Pueblo County. So please pass that on to him.
I will.
Okay, thank you so much, YMCA. The next presentation we have on the work session is the Chamber of Commerce for their non-departmental budget request. Um, this is very similar to the YMCA in that um, we had some follow-up questions, asking what the chamber was going to do with their funds. So um, I see Ms. Nava and Ms. Kitzman.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. We have a presentation that we submitted. Just wait for that to come up and then we'll get going here. Um, thought it was important to kind of go over kind of the history of lodging dollars. Public Lodgers agreed to tax themselves in order to create a sustainable funding source um, back in nineteen eighty-two. Got it? Thank you. Uh, so that, the purpose of that lodging tax that they wanted imposed on themselves was really for the promotion um, of the tourism industry. And uh, the chamber and the city engaged in an MOU back in nineteen eighty-two um, to act as the public convention and visitors bureau, um, responsible for the promotion and tourism of Pueblo. Uh, established two percent lodging tax, which was a pass-through um, from the city to the chamber um, for tourism promotion. In nineteen eighty-six, it was increased by one point, one point five percent. And then in nineteen eighty, or nineteen ninety-two, it was increased another point eight percent, um, which equals the four point three current uh, lodging tax that we're seeing today. Um, in ninety-three, council voted to end the two percent pass-through um, in order to fund the event center. And then in ninety-three is when we started preparing, the chamber has been started preparing annual funding request, budget request to the city. Um, along with our detailed audit, uh, was also submitted with that annual request. Tourism, it's big business in Colorado. Put that for me. Uh, in twenty twenty, uh, travel spending in Pueblo County was set one hundred and seventy-six point six million, which generated about six million dollars of local tax revenue, um, and about five million dollars of state tax revenue. In twenty twenty-one, uh, travel spending two hundred and sixty-seven and a half million dollars in Pueblo County, with about twenty-five hundred and seventy jobs in the tourism industry. Uh, local tax generation of seven point seven million, state tax generation of about eight point four million. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the gross lodging sales for the city of Pueblo was forty-six million dollars. Average room rate in the city of Pueblo uh, is about a hundred and thirty dollars, which equated to about three hundred and fifty-three thousand rooms that were um, booked through twenty twenty-one. Next slide is just some historical data on lodging tax throughout uh, the city from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-one. Uh, gross, gross lodging sales, you're going to see some blanks from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. Those numbers were not collected by the city at that time. Didn't start getting collected until twenty eighteen. Um, and then you can see the lodging tax revenue that was uh, generated and how much was passed on to the C V B uh, for the promotion of, of tourism in Pueblo. Any questions so far before we move on?
I'll take it from here and just talking a little bit about the scope of services that Visit Pueblo offers. I know we've talked about it in this room a few times, but as a reminder, uh, we are a destination management. uh, we are a destination management organization. That's kind of the new term for Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's a more holistic term because there's a lot more to uh tourism promotion these days. So advocacy for tourism and hospitality um in general at a state and local level. Um, destination development, how we um help our partners in the community, in the county, how we build out additional events, particularly how we we offer different scopes of services, marketing and advertising, of course, event sales and support, how we uh retract, attract and retain events here in Pueblo, uh conference sales uh and events, and then visitor services in general. Okay. Advocacy components of what we do, we work uh daily with the Colorado Tourism Office, who is kind of the leader of the industry, obviously for Colorado. Um, providing a multitude of resources from that level down to the local level, whether it be uh grant information or general resources on um hospitality and visitor services to um industry standards of, you know, the tourism, and we relate those down to the local level. Uh, Tourism Industry Association is a local advocacy group, I'm sorry, a state advocacy group that we belong to as a member. I have a seat on the board. We pay attention to uh issues that might impact the tourism industry at a state level. And of course, then trickle down to the local level that we should be concerned about for our partners. We're members of the Colorado Hotel and Lodging Association for the same reasons. Colorado Association of Destination Management Organizations, big mouthful, but basically um the same um entities from across the state like Visit Pueblo. We get together regularly to share industry standards, share issues that we're facing and help collaborate and solve problems and share information, as well as um being good stewards of our area, Care for Colorado and Leave No Trace, our state initiatives, to make sure that we are um advocating for our visitors to um travel responsibly and leave our place like they found it. And then, of course, um the Visit Pueblo Newsletter and Event Notifications, we uh launched that in uh earlier this year as an attempt to try to help notify our local businesses, particularly the downtown businesses where we might have a large conference or event that will impact um their business and we wanted them to be prepared. So a conference coming in with a thousand people on a Tuesday when restaurants are closed or shops are closed isn't um good for our reputation and isn't good for the the visitor experience. So how do we notify our local business community to staff up and plan for those larger events and be prepared for them? Destination Development um is a slew of um services from uh the Destination Pueblo Advisory Committee that we have um worked with for over thirty years. That was started as an initiative through the chamber. And it's a group of attractions that all come together to meet and go through, you know, uh different um industry standards and conversations for training. We've offered them digital and social media trainings, um grant opportunities, et cetera. The Pueblo Lodging Association, we manage that group as well. We now meet quarterly with that group. Um, and we talk about industry standards, melded down from the Colorado Hotel Lodging Association, et cetera, and help them with things like connecting them with the police department uh for uh crime related issues and help in managing um, you know, homelessness issues that are impacting the Lodging Association. Um, and then I referenced um the Colorado Association of Destination Management. We also offer visitor services like the Pueblo Welcome Center, Center and Visitor Resources. Uh, enhancing and creating tourism assets is one that we've had some good luck in lately, where we've um been able to create um infrastructure to bring, attract and retain the recent event called Gravel Locos, a um gravel cycling event that happened here in Pueblo and working to build that out with a with the help of a grant from the Colorado Tourism Office. So really um showcasing Pueblo as a unique place for gravel cycling. And we're pretty proud of that, that we've already um attracted them and retained them for next year as well, after their first event this year. And then something on the list right now that we're um working on is the development of a sports event sales program. So really capitalizing on Pueblo's amazing facilities, um the CSU facilities, city and county parks, et cetera, Lake Pueblo State Park, and how we attract and uh retain sporting related championship events, et cetera, like USA Boxing that just happened recently as well and has already rebooked for twenty twenty three. So pretty proud of that as well. Um, of course, marketing and advertising, we um everything on visitpueblo.org, which is our front facing website. Uh, we create and curate content from social and digital platforms and push that out to the general uh population with targeted marketing uh outside of Pueblo, particularly as we're working to market more to tourists and to other event planners, et cetera. Um, this uh this slide shows you a little bit of some of the highlights from print and digital media to social, et cetera. Uh, really a holistic approach in where we um advertise from national platforms to to local and state platforms as well. We also engage in uh regular media receptions that we're fortunate to partner with the Colorado Tourism Office on, where we have to uh write pitches about Pueblo content, what's unique and um interesting about Pueblo and how can we sell ourselves as a destination? And we go um, we do those pitches to uh media rooms of journalists from social to digital platforms to freelance writers and all kinds of realms, from family travel to food, et cetera. Uh, we've been very um successful at doing that and been able to generate some organic uh content in a lot of different platforms that way as well. One recently, we just um that was um from AAA magazine that just happened this week. So you'll start to see that one come out. We push those through our social media and digital um to let the community know as well. And then event sales and support is a pretty big one. Um, we work hand in hand with the convention center regularly uh to attract conferences and events. A lot of the marketing that we do is media uh or excuse me, meeting planner marketing. So marketing to planners that are are planning conferences and events for statewide associations, all the way down to sporting events, et cetera. So that requires us to um attend trade shows pretty regularly through the year. You'll see is probably on average of ten that will attend. And we are selling Pueblo to groups of meeting planners, hoping to bring their events here to Pueblo, to the convention center, to um CSU, to the Colorado State Fair, basically any facility that will fit that event. And then we spend money marketing in those platforms as well. Um, and we'll receive RFPs for us to look at that type of business and see if it'll be a good fit for for the location. Um, and then everything from tour bus operators to international travel and then hosting site visits here for those maybe media and event planners too. So. Um, and last but not least, visitor services. Uh, many of you are familiar with that Pueblo Welcome Bags, the Pueblo Salsa is very popular. Those are things that come at a cost to us and and um we provide those to specific events as well as uh creating the Pueblo Visitor Guide and the Pueblo Livability Magazine to um further showcase our community. Uh, then we also uh host monthly hospitality training and free days at local attractions and um provide our frontline tourism uh training to lodging partners, as well as all of our uh Destination Pueblo partners as well monthly. So I'm trying to talk fast and get it all in and I'll turn it back over to Dwayne.
So a look ahead at twenty twenty three, some of the things we want to expand on um is increased community grant fund to support partner marketing and event needs. Um, an example of that would be uh like Chuck Wagon event that we helped support in twenty twenty two. Um, so those kind of events and being able to to offer more support to them. Uh, we did add a halftime uh marketing and engagement specialist that is really her focus is on um exploring this uh sports avenue and bringing more tournaments and and those sporting events to Pueblo. Um, she's in the process already of meeting with, you know, all of the different venues and trying to put together some kind of sales packet of how we can promote those venues. Um, development of a sports and marketing program. Um, I don't think we're at the point yet to put together a sports commission, but uh that is the the hope for the future as we put together a sports commission that can really start coming after these large scale uh sporting events. Um, invest in intelligence based destination and event data. Um, this is something that Danielle has been exploring for the last couple of years, but this program is not cheap. Um, will you speak on what that looks like?
Yeah, we've we've been in the process of collecting um, if you will, from uh places like Placer AI or um Datify, their organizations that will provide us like geofence tracking mechanisms, um even down to the point where they will, we can send out targeted ads to a demographic base to say, Visit Pueblo. And then when they do come to Pueblo, we get real time ROI on that. We know that we sent them an ad and that person showed up in Pueblo. Um, then another component would be giving us realistic data around events or particular segments of the community, like we could geofence museums, geofence uh, you know, the Chili Festival, which is always a big topic of conversation, or Lake Pueblo, and 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 really um figure out how many um, how many visitors are there and what their interest levels are and collect that demographic data to better um, you know, how we market to them later in the future. And then the last one would be just um optimizing digital content and advertising as we continue to build out our programs and offerings. For instance, like the gravel um destination build out, that requires us to build out content and advertising and push that out to that, you know, that segment of the population that's interested in outdoor events. So we're constantly generating that type of content and then figuring out how we market to that. Another segment that we're looking at for twenty twenty three is optimizing more of the history um culture and arts component. We just recently wrote a grant for that and hopefully, fingers crossed, we we get that grant, then that'll require us to build out that content. And so it's constantly, you know, changing and adding and and uh reacting to the environment.
You know, I think a couple of points that I just want to hit on, you know, with this USA Boxing uh event. I mean, that is, that is a worldwide event where we brought worldwide boxers into Pueblo. Um, gravel locos, five hundred, you know, national riders or worldwide riders. I think we had four, four participants that actually rode in the Tour de France that visited Pueblo and they I wish we could have gotten testimonials from them because the way they see Pueblo is the way I wish Pueblo would see Pueblo. Um, it was, it was amazing to listen to them talk about our community. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nava and Ms. Kitzman. What questions are there from council? Council Martinez Ortega?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. Um, we saw a lot of how the money is collected, how, what the uh lodging tax's history is, how it's collected. Um, thank you for that history. Um, but you're requesting another hundred and fifty thousand dollars for uh this next year? Where's the slide on how that's going to be spent?
So that was actually uh submitted with our budget request. Um, the budget request that we submitted was one point seven million dollars.
Yeah, you requested that for one point seven and you said how that was going to be spent. But how are you going to spend nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year?
It'd be scaling back what the original budget presentation was.
So we're just supposed to guess, pick and choose and just give this money free will?
So we weren't asked for another budget for the nine hundred thousand dollars. And we asked for an additional hundred thousand, not hundred and fifty is what I, my understanding is what is being presented. Um, and we weren't asked to prepare a budget for that. So uh if we would have been asked to prepare a budget for that, we would have, but really it's just scaling back. Actually, it's increasing what we currently have this year um to offer and build out the sports programming.
Well, whatever you're, whatever you reported out on this time, you're getting done with eight hundred thousand dollars. And the additional fifty thousand dollars for your um for the grant that you received, I think is um suffice. Um, and without seeing like what you're actually going to spend in an additional hundred thousand dollars on, uh, I can't support that.
So we, the last slide that we just went over was the looking ahead. So that hundred thousand dollars.
Those aren't actual dollar amounts. That's not saying we're going to do this, this and that. That's not a plan. Like, I don't know how your board lets that fly, but um it's doesn't seem to be very accountable.
Received, this printout is a plan. It's segmented out in categories of expenses. And then that is also backed up with um a scope of work that it further dives into detail of what that category means and you were, you were supplied with that. We've supplied this every year with our budget request. Along with uh with that same budget request, you're supplied with uh an uh financial audit that further breaks down all of those expenditures.
I would have loved to have seen one for nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, if we would have been asked, and certainly every year you, we request more funds. And so then we, you know, you have a proposed budget that we give you. And then once we receive our funding in December typically, then we start to create the actual because we don't know what we're getting until you, you know, till you tell us. So then we start to formulate the actual based on your response. So now that we know where we're at, we're obviously working all those actuals and we know we're going to invest moreover in that sports department because we've already kind of started to.
Council Graham?
Can you provide us with just some examples of the testimonial you've heard from the the riders and the the boxers? I I attended both events and it was, it was cool to see that going on in Pueblo. But I do kind of feel like there was just a little bit lack of um letting people know it was going on. Um, when I went to the USA Boxing thing for the last day for the the finals and the medals, there wasn't very many people there and a lot of people didn't know that that was being provided in Pueblo and it was free. So that would be my only suggestion is just trying to get it out in the community a little bit more because once people knew it was going on, they were like, holy cow, this has been here all week. How cool.
So, you know, honestly, I'm I'm really happy that you brought that up because that is something that we really want to look at partnering with the city and the county on is coming up with some kind of way to get people off the interstate and into our downtown. How do we provide signage? How do we provide information to our community that isn't reading our local newspaper? Um, if they're not, you know, tied into our social media page or our social media platform in the cities, how do we get that information out to everybody? So, you know, how do we get digital billboards, you know, both ends of Pueblo? How do we, how do we let people know and get them off the interstate and down to our our business district so they can participate in these activities? Um, it's, it's tough, but we need, we need help and support trying to figure out what that looks like because this isn't a chamber, you know, issue. This is a city issue. And how do we get people engaged in our own community and let them know about all of the events? Not just chamber events, but every event that happens in Pueblo. You know, every opportunity. I haven't even been to every museum in Pueblo and I've lived here my entire life. You know, how do we get our own community engaged in these activities?
I would piggyback really quick to say gravel locos. Oh, thanks. It's tough. Um, and I think uh Councilwoman Martinez, we were emailing back and forth and she said, how do I go watch this? Not every, not every event is really, you know, consumer friendly, I guess. And gravel locos was one of those that wasn't. And we didn't, um, you know, we work with a promoter. I mean, realistically, it's their race. We're just helping to support what they are asking of us and figure out how we can, you know, elevate their event for them the best we can. They are more interested that this year in getting the rider participation here and then getting the riders to see our gravel, to see our city and our community and then build that event out and it gets bigger. Um, similar to the Pueblo Classic Bike Race, the first year it came, we didn't provide uh an outdoor festival component. We worked with the promoter and those things are expensive. Uh, we spent a little over fifteen thousand dollars to support it in twenty twenty two just to build out a little entertainment garden for them and try to bring more community components. Those things take time and consistency for our community to say, oh, this is, this is something I want to go see and check out and it's new. They've never seen it. So we have to be consistent and spend that money and continue to work on the marketing and the messaging to to build those events out. And so we'll continue to do that.
Council Flores?
You know, uh, I I get, I kind of get a report card every month uh when I go to the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority meetings, uh which uh both uh President Graham and Mayor Gradishar belong to. And uh they've seen a huge difference in uh the way you are operating uh within all the tourism industry. Uh, specifically you, Danielle. I know that you're a member of several tourism boards. But most organizations, most businesses, uh they don't really depend on customers just falling out of the sky. You've really got to market. And so the majority of the money that we give you, you're spending for absolutely doing that. You're focused on marketing. It it's uh, it's it's really money that is spent to sell our community. You are the salespeople of this community to sell tourism. And you do an excellent job. And just as an example, and I brought this up last week, uh Spectrum, which is uh has a management agreement with PIRA to run the convention center, they're indicating that they're seeing opportunities they never have before. And I know that you are working very, very hard. And I know that you are working very, very hard, uh, because of your connections now with the tourism board in Colorado of going out and being proactive instead of waiting for people to come off, you know, the, the highway. And, uh, they've indicated that their sales just through the month of September have increased over $600,000 uh, because of all of these events that you're putting together. The Chili Frigola Festival, which is not in your contractual obligation, is a classic, classic example of you doing that on the side as a function of the chamber. But imagine all the people that came into Pueblo, you know, over a hundred thousand people to spend their money in Pueblo. So we have to look at the dollars that we give you as marketing money, uh, just like any business that advertises on social media, on television or radio, and understand that for every tours that we bring in, we might spend a dollar in advertising, they might spend six to seven dollars on top of that. It's like throwing the rock in the middle of the lake and seeing that ripple effect. That's what marketing is. And, uh, uh, in a lot of ways, uh, you know, when you spend a marketing dollar, uh, you get it back in, uh, you know, five, six, seven percent, you know, benefit. So I, I wanted to say that, uh, uh, I, I love this proactive approach and, uh, I believe that you're going in the right direction and I thank you for, I, I think you guys are doing a lot better job than we have in the past in selling Pueblo. Thank you.
I just have a quick question for the sports coordinator. Will they also focus on the whitewater park? And the kayak park, or is it primarily like the ball sports?
No.
So, um, she currently right now in her part-time status is doing a full assessment of all facilities in Pueblo County and all sporting related events. We're actually doing our first trade show this week, um, based off of a referral from USA Boxing and they've been great partners, really, um, really positive about their experience in Pueblo, really positive about the convention center and the facilities there. So they've been willing to work with us because they go to other, um, large scale sporting event trade shows as well. So that's where we're starting to, we want to start to invest our time and energy. But basically taking the time to do a whole, um, facilities or capability inventory, if you will, of everything we could possibly offer and do, and then how we translate that into sales materials for those types of trade shows to attract that. So absolutely love to bring more, uh, activity to the kayak park and have invested some, um, money supporting the levee, um, area, the bridge and the, in marketing, um, to the state and pitching some of the stories about that. So we want to really build that out with some more activity.
Counselor Tensio?
You know, I really like the way you guys support these events. Uh, by the way, you're not the promoters. I went to the, uh, the boxing tournament, but I don't know what you want to call it, but I went a couple of days. And Heather's right, there weren't very many people there, but it wasn't due to the fault of the chamber. You're not the promoter. The promoter didn't, really didn't do his job promoting the thing. Uh, thank you for the support of these things. But, uh, one of the questions I ask is all these room nights that we have in Pueblo, how many of them are multi uh, room nights, multi-day room nights? And are they associated with an event? And can we find out that kind of information? You talked about placer. They do some of that.
Yep. Yeah, that'd be why we'd want that type of, um, tool would be to help us kind of narrow down, especially around maybe a particular conference where we could, you know, really target that, that span of time. Right now we're getting kind of bulk data to know what lodging is doing, you know, over the course of a month, for instance, and not really, it's not as easy to get it, uh, the convention center and as well as us, we uh, try to get reports back from each lodging association partner on their, um, their activity and what impacts their activity. But that's one-on-one phone calls and a, and a lot of, uh, you know,
That's what placer is for.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And you're right, they are expensive, but
Yep.
might be worth it to be able to do that. Thank you for all you do.
Counselor Maeshri?
Um, okay. So with Colorado being one of the highest rising inflation states in the nation, what is your proactive approach to when gas prices and inflation, people aren't touring, they're, they're not taking, they're not taking destinations, vacations and so forth. What is your proactive approach to that?
Well, actually the data speaks otherwise, quite frankly. Um, the data that we just presented, um, in here is fresh off the presses for the 2021 spending. And then we get modeling reports through the, through the year and monthly with the Colorado Tourism Office and talking about, you know, traveler spending and a lot of people are investing in staycations, partly to your point that, you know, gas prices, et cetera are high. So they're traveling inside of the state maybe or not as far. And, and so in those situations, we will, um, correct our marketing to really focus on drive, um, you know, drive state trips, uh, areas that, you know, we're just promoting a, a day trip or overnight or weekend trips instead of, um, regional marketing, for instance. And so that's all done with, you know, digital, um, you know, marketing efforts that way. But really the data's been amazing. I mean, we're very fortunate in the tourism industry right now to see the increases that we've had and, and the sustainability of, um, of it. Uh, we were just talking to a lodging partner on the way up who's here today. Thank you, Jeff Bailey from the Aborando Inn. And he referenced September, this September, his, um, lodging receipts were up 70% Jeff. So we're seeing that across the board and we look at that data monthly, um, the lodging receipts for the lodging tax collection for the cities up as well. So a very, very, um, good, good outlook at the moment.
So is the article in the Chieftain wrong about September, uh, July and August, a lodging tax being down? 20% in July, 8% in August.
But it's been, it's been pretty consistently steady up and we are up overall, um, over last year. I do know that for a fact. So.
But that's the reason why I brought it up because that's what the Chieftain said.
Yeah.
How well did you guys do with the, um, Chili Festival? They, you know, this year seemed like a really awesome year with the balloons and so forth. Do you guys have your total in?
Um, I think we are scheduled for November 7th to talk about Chili Fest. Um, we're still, you know, invoices are still trickling in. We know where our revenue is, we know where we are right now with expenses, but, um, I, I looked at it today and I, I think we're missing probably six or seven invoices right now. So it's hard to give rough numbers. I think we, I think it was a great year. I think, you know, the Broncos not playing, um, and you know, I hope the Chieftain doesn't quote me on this and I don't get phone calls tomorrow, but, um, because I have no control over the NFL schedule, by the way. I, Sunday, the Broncos playing in the evening, you know, really opened up an opportunity for us to be able to bring higher numbers in on Sunday that we normally do. Last year, I think they played at 11 or two and I mean, numbers were sparse on Sunday. So it was a great festival this year. I mean, it was, it was packed every single day. Lines out the door, you know, before open, every single opening. Um, it looked like a great turnout for us.
I would jump in and say we are blessed with great weather, which always is helpful for any outdoor event. And that's not always the case every year. I mean, we have suffered some pretty significant weather losses, um, during Chili Fest weekend in the past. So we always cross our fingers and hope for the best. And I also think the addition of the balloon fest, that's something else that we've brought, you know, to Pueblo in working with, um, community partners and one of our board members, thank you Brett, he's here. But to really build that out and make that an additional attraction, kind of in conjunction with, but as separate as well. And that brought, we, rough estimates around 17, 18,000 people to the balloon fest portion alone. And that's an attraction that people follow and, you know, really get behind. It's something new to our community. So we're really happy to continue to build on that success.
I think right now he's already scheduled 20 balloons for next year. 20 to 24 balloons, I think this year we have.
You might have, not have to come back on the 7th.
Thank you, Brett.
And Brett single-handedly put that balloon fest together. I mean, him and his wife Sally, without them, that, you know, we, we offered some support, but for the majority of it, they, they put that together and just a great addition. Couple of things I just want to hit on before we close and I know we're way, way over time. You know, the numbers increased from 2015 through 2021, year over year, lodging numbers. One thing we can, we, we need from the city is we need to figure out a way to create, to collect VRBO taxes. How do we collect lodging tax on these VRBOs that are currently not paying the lodging tax? So, you know, we need city council to take some action on that and move forward on that in order to get that figured out. Because that isn't something that the chamber can own. That's got to be something that's done through this council. So
They need to be licensed and they need to be
Absolutely.
Interestingly, I just got that data today because we paid for a report to co-watch that data. And I'll just tell you really quickly, uh, $3,912,000 was spent, um, through, from, from the first of the year, um, through September. And that's non-tax income that we aren't receiving taxes on. So our lodging partners are tracking that as well because it's not quite fair. So
Counselor Flores has a really quick comment and then we have to.
It's quick. Uh, I, I just want the council to, to consider the amount that he recommended, which is 950,000. So I hope the council can support that.
Okay. Thank you, Chamber. We're moving on.
Thank you.
Um, last on our agenda are, is a Pueblo Police Department 2023 budget work session update. So Chief Nola, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, members of council. Um, I think I have a presentation. Well, thank you. So we'll just get right into it. Uh, the, uh, slide here shows the difference between our budget as it was approved in 2022 and as it's a pro, uh, pro proposed in 2023. If you'll notice there, the increase of two point, roughly $2.5 million was in the personnel, uh, line items of the, uh, budget, not in the operating budget, which is exactly the same as it was last year. During the, uh, some of that increase in the personnel line items is driven by, uh, personnel changes. Uh, the mayor's approved unfreezing, uh, one office assistant and unfreezing a code enforcement officer position. They've also, uh, approved a new code enforcement officer position, two more community service officers and a payroll clerk. Uh, for additional full-time payroll clerk. Oh, the increases are, are also driven by pay raises, um, two mil, a little over $2 million of pay raises and, uh, pay for the newly funded and refunded positions. A little over $800,000 for the benefits, retirement, overtime increases and workers' compensation. There was about $429,000 of reductions in the personnel line items due to, uh, various adjustments and employee benefit line items. So that, that all adds and subtracts up to the $2.5 million roughly of, of our increase in our operating budget. Again, there was $0 increase, uh, $0 amount change to our operating budget over 2022. This is what our operating budget has looked like over the last 13 years. Um, also our personnel budget. The top line, uh, 2023 is the proposed budget as it stands today. Roughly our, our, uh, for the last, um, 13 years, from the lowest operating budget level to the highest operating budget level has been a difference of a little over a half a million dollars. Our average over the last 13 years in our operating budget has been a little over $2 million. So the question is, what does that operating budget pay for the way it is now? These are the numbers from 2021, which is the last year we have the full numbers for. It includes items such as personnel's or professional services of about $120,000. That includes hiring psychologists, paying for advertising, for recruiting, uh, psychological exams, background investigations, our Kalia accreditation, uh, other professional organizations that we're members of, like international associations of Chisa Police. Another almost $7 million or $700,000, uh, goes towards paying for vehicle maintenance, repair and fuel. Uh, another $176,000 is for contract services for like our copiers, janitorial staff that, that comes in after hours. We pay a little over a half a million dollars in utilities. Uh, those utilities include telephone, uh, power, heat, trash, a little over, uh, almost $15,000 in dues and subscriptions. Uh, there's some other, uh, line items there, uh, ammunition, office supplies, uh, rentals, um, like barricades for protests, barricades for the parades that we do every year, operating supplies, training and travel, postage. Just those line items alone add up to a little over a $1.7 million of our $2 million budget. Which leaves us approximately $294,000, $294,809 of other expenses in our operating budget that cover things like cleaning supplies, building repairs, property and evidence supplies, uniform repair and replacement, printing, binding, police academy and those kinds of things. So how does that relate to 2B? These are the expenditures for 2B from 2018 through 2021. In 2018 and 2019, it's important to understand that the city manager was in place at that time and he gave direction that we were only to expend 2B funds as it relates to actual 2B officers, which is not the way this, the sales tax was written. Which is why we had the ending fund balance in 2018, the extended ending fund balance in 2019. 2020 was the first year of Mayor Gradisar's term where he had the budget presented to council. And in that year, we, we were allowed, allocated $3.6 million in revenue. And we spent four point, almost $4.8 million for equipment and supplies. We actually overspent our revenue in the PSST sales tax by one point, 1.1 million dollars to leave an ending fund balance of 2.4 million for that year. In 2020, we spent three point, almost 3.9 million of the 4.6 million that was, uh, allotted. That left a, a balance of $814,000 and an ending fund balance of 3.3 roughly million dollars in 2021. In 2020, this year, it's not completely, uh, as you know, it hasn't completely ended. Our expected revenue in, uh, 2B funds was $4.6 million. We are anticipating to spend $6.1 million, uh, in revenue on different, uh, line items, a capital projects, a fleet, uh, uh, and, and some other things that were, we bought and they were approved by council this year, which will leave us with, uh, about when it's all figured out, about $1.4 million left over in the 2B funds. So next year, if 2B is approved, we have capital projects that are allocated right now for those funds. A drone program of $35,000, uh, which will pay for purchase and maintenance of drones, uh, training for the drone pilots and software that allows us to utilize live feeds back to the emergency operations center. We're also planning to update and replace laptops, uh, for the police department vehicles, which is about an $850,000 project. Vehicle video replacements, that's the in-car camera systems that we use in our vehicles, which is a little over a half a million dollars in, in expenditure. We're also planning on spending about $1.3 million in rolling stock, which is anticipated to be marked, marked units and about $39,000 in BlackBerry licensing. Due to CAT RMS systems that we are looking at now to update our technology, the, uh, we have purchased iPhones for all of our patrol officers. Cause there's features of that CAT RMS system that they can use their phones to do when they're out in the field. It'll also free up our dispatchers from having to, uh, transfer calls to, to citizens that are looking to contact officers. The, these projects alone account for $2.8 million roughly. Our proposed budget for 2022, our 2023 is $2,100,000. We cannot cover the expenditures that we're looking to outlay in our capital projects without 2B, without some massive increase in our, in our operating budget. Currently, the 2B sales tax pays for the salary and benefits of 20 patrol officers and four sergeants. And that has been the case since 2018, when the, when the, uh, sales tax initiated. To be clear, in 2018, we were only allowed to hire 18 patrol officers and two sergeants out of the 2B funds. Those 18 officers and 2B, and two sergeants were fully funded out of that PSST sales tax or 2B. And then we have done that every year since 2018. Department manpower, since 2018, you can see there initially, we were authorized in 2018, 225 officers because of the 18 and two and not the 20 and four. In 20, uh, 2020 or 2019, that went up to 231. You can see there, July of 2019, we were up into a peak of 224 officers. In a government, uh, agency, that's probably as close to fully staffed as our department will ever get because we can't hire positions until they're fully vacated. Right now we are at 202 officers. If you look at the timeline and you look at our count of officers as we progress through, there were some pretty significant If you look at the timeline and you look at our count of officers as we progress through, there were some pretty significant things that happened following January or July of 2019. One of those was the COVID pandemic. The other one was some of the unrest that happened due to George Floyd and some other things through our country that, that led to some outcry and protests throughout the community. We here in Pueblo suffered twenty-six straight weeks of, of protest. Officers were leaving in droves during that time period and it was also very hard to hire some. You'll also notice that in July of 2020, Senate Bill twenty-two seventeen passed, which took away qualified immunity to police officers. That has made it very difficult to attract officers into this state from out of state and it's also made some officers leave the profession. Since July, 2019, the department has hired seventy-one officers. Forty-eight of these seventy-one officers are still employed by the Pueblo Police Department. Twenty-two of them resigned voluntarily and one was discharged. Their probationary employment was ended. Currently, we have twenty-nine vacancies. This is not unique to Pueblo. As you can see here, in April of twenty-two, which is the latest numbers I could find, Colorado Springs was short sixty-six officers. Just this month, I saw an article where Denver PD is short ten percent of their staffing, which equates to about a hundred and fifty-six officers. Aurora PD is short over seventy officers. Statewide data from Colorado Post shows that only seventy-four percent replacement rate for police officers. In 2021, the state of Colorado lost twenty-four hundred police officers and we only replaced them with seventeen hundred. This is a serious issue that we are facing throughout the country regarding this profession. Kansas City, Kansas is two hundred officers short, Atlanta, Georgia, two hundred and fifty officers. Dallas, Texas, five hundred and fifty, Portland, Oregon, a hundred. Chicago PD this summer had to cancel all, all days off for their officers because there's that shortage of manpower. So their officers are working seven days a week. Seattle Police Department moved ninety-nine detectives back into patrol to fill patrol vacancies. Albuquerque PD, not too far from here, is short two hundred and twenty-one officers and LAPD is short six hundred and fifty officers. National survey in June of 2021 showed the police departments around the country on average are filling only ninety-three percent of available budget positions. We're at eighty-seven percent. That same survey showed a forty-five percent increase in retirements and an eighteen percent jump in resignations. So why else is two B important? This is a little bit of history about our police department. And in an article that was written in the Pueblo Chieftain in June of nineteen eighteen, they talked about some of the progressive things that under Chief Daley, our department was doing. One of those things was fingerprint analysis, record management system and, and other improvements in our department that made us one of the most progressive departments in the country at the time. In May of nineteen twenty-nine, a gentleman you may have not heard of, Pretty Boy Floyd, was arrested here in Pueblo for vagrancy. We were one of the few departments west of the Mississippi that took photographs and fingerprints of every person that was arrested. In June of nineteen thirty-three, Pretty Boy Floyd and some of his cohorts were involved in the murder of four officers outside, four police officers outside the Kansas City Union Station. Our picture was the only one available to the FBI. It was used on their FBI Most Wanted poster and is posted in our police department on our second floor. This is the department that we used to have. Progressive, forward-leaning, looking to use technology to make ourselves better and more efficient. Fast forward to nineteen ninety-six, when I get hired at the Pueblo Police Department, I'm sitting in a patrol car handwriting reports and using whiteout. When every other, every major department in the country had computers in their car, including the department I left to come here to work in Pueblo. We went from being one of the most progressive police departments in the West to the Stone Age in sixty-seven years, while departments around us caught up and surpassed our abilities. Two B will ensure this doesn't happen. It is vital to what we are doing. Whilst the council certainly could vote to increase our budget another four point three million dollars to make up the loss of two B. My experience shows that when hard times hit, one of the first areas that is affected in the city budget is the operating budget of the departments and the police department is no exception. If you look back to the slide over the last thirteen years of our budget, only a half a million dollar increase in our operating budget shows what the impact of another few bad years in Pueblo would have on our, on our operating budget. Those kinds of decisions were what led to our cars looking like this in two thousand fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, where they had almost three hundred thousand miles on them and our officers were sitting in seats that had broke springs and had equipment that was ineffective for them to do their job. I hope this helps explain our budget. I hope it helps explain why we need two B. I hope that council will not encourage people outside in the community to not vote for two B because it is crucial to what we want to do as a department. We are on the precipice of be once again becoming one of the more progressive police departments in the state of Colorado. And to lose two B would take that away. The passage of two B also speaks to future recruits about the commitment of our community and the men and women who serve their, their community. And I think if we, if we lost two B, I think it could have a detrimental impact on our ability to recruit, which is already suffering as it is. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thanks for the presentation, Chief. How do you plan on addressing this turnover issue?
Well, there's a couple of things that we are doing. It is an issue. It is an issue that we spent quite a bit of time. I just came back from Dallas from the International Association of Chiefs of Police Convention. And that was one of the major topics that was talked about throughout the, the, the time there. I think that there are some things that are going to have to change for it to go back to the way it was. And some of those things are reinstating qualified immunity and some of those things have to happen at the legislative level, which I don't have a whole lot of control about. But what we can do here is try to, try to show future recruits the commitment of our, of our citizens and our council and the support of our police officers. I think we can leverage that to show people and bring people from Pueblo into this profession because that's what we really want, is Pueblans serving Pueblans. But I think we need to have some commitment. I think there's a couple of things we can do internally as far as encouraging our officers to be better recruiters and including myself. We are reaching out. We've reached out to a couple of different organizations at the, at the suggestion of Counselor Flores. We reached out to look for a consultant. There aren't many and the ones that are there are outrageously expensive. So there's other things that we're going to have to look at. We've changed our advertising. We're getting ready to post some billboards in different areas. I think that there's some movement on, on different salary issues that can help us recruit people and things like that, that I think will help us attract other, other individuals to this community.
Okay, but that doesn't necessarily address the turnover rate or the turnover issue. You yourself earlier said this year that that the communities are best, are most safe when resources are put in the hands of community members. And of this two point five million, I don't see any of that going towards like community relations between police and community members or those community services like you were talking about.
You know, I think, I, I think that's, that's a fair point, but what I would tell you is we attend community events all the time. We are at community events all the time. I was at a, two community events on Saturday. We had the, the bikers and, and the toy ball. We had the P-Pal football playoff game or All-Star game. My officers attend a variety of community events, touch a truck. NAACP has a picnic every summer that we attend. You know, you've seen me at, at several of these events. That's how we do our public outreach. That's how we get involved in the community. We go to the Boys and Girls Club on occasion. We have gone to schools. So that's, that's where we use our time as we have it. That's one of the issues is the more, the more people we can hire, the more of that we can do. Because we're taking officers off the street to attend those events, which is important because it is important to be part of the community. But that's how we, that's how we address.
Thanks for answering that. My last question is, of the thirty-three million dollars, I believe that's the request thereabouts. Is the city the only entity that you receive monies from and what is that budget entirely?
Are you talking about our, our budget from the general fund?
Your, your general fund budget, what you receive from the city, but what about state, county, federal monies? Anything like that? And can you tell us that entire budget?
We do receive, I don't, I don't know that entire budget as far as the grants that we receive. We do receive grants from a variety of different outside sources to include federal and state. I think just a few weeks ago, we brought forward, one of those was the speed enforcement grant. So we get grants such as that that we, we can utilize as well. But those grants aren't going to pay for the, the amount of equipment that we need. They're not going to pay for the vehicles that we need and those kinds of things.
So like the in-kind vehicles being donated like over the years, so they have to be used in like, I think it was military vehicles that had to be used once. And so they were serving warrants with those to justify their use. What is the amount of money that you actually receive in kind? And then also, like, do you have a ballpark of that? Is it an extra million, two million, twenty million dollars on top of that thirty?
I, I couldn't answer that with any, with any accuracy without doing some research, to be honest with you. As far as the, I think you're speaking about the ten thirty-three program, we have one vehicle from the ten thirty-three program, which is the MRAP. To my knowledge, that's the only vehicle we have through the ten thirty-three program that is available to our officers for use. So we don't have any other donated vehicles that, that I'm aware of.
Some of it could also be with just the Sheriff's Department. I could be confusing some of those as well. But I would love to see in the future a budget, like an entire, a budget of your entire department, all the monies and everything that you receive from that. Or that, from the grants and everybody, everywhere, federal, state, anything like that.
Counselor Tencio.
I'll let you finish writing, Chief. Qualified immunity, if it isn't re-estate, reinstated from, at the legislative level, what are you doing to teach our police officers that they wouldn't need it in the first place?
Well, I think it's, I, I'm not sure that, that I could actually teach them that. What we do talk about is the fact that the city does represent the department and the officers that are within it. We do a lot of training to try to make sure that our officers are up to date on case law and different things that would affect qualified immunity. But the reality of it is qualified immunity is a protection that officers need because they're, they're making split-second decisions in, in the heat of the moment, when everybody else has days and days to, to break down their decision and their actions. And for an officer to go out in the field without that protection is very difficult. Because now if they make a mistake and they had a half a second to make a decision, they're, they are potentially liable themselves for, for, for the implications of that mistake. Now, a mistake is a mistake. A criminal act is a criminal act. And what we're talking about, when you're talking about something like George Floyd, that's a criminal act, which is totally different. And those officers would suffer the criminal consequences for that action.
Those are the actions I'm talking about. Now, I understand the split-second decisions that police officers.
But taking qualified immunity away from officers when they're making those kinds of decisions is, is nerve-wracking at best and terrifying at worst. So, and I know of a chief just recently that left to another state because of that reason alone.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Maestri?
I'm sorry, you're in such a difficult position to get up here and have to ask the taxpayers for more money. I know that's really difficult, especially when we're looking at one of the largest budgets we've ever had at a hundred and thirty-three million. And we just debruised and gained seventeen million dollars of taxpayer money from that debruising and yet they still not enough money in the coffers to fully fund our police department. And I'm hoping that the taxpayers realize that this is what we need in order to operate. But yet, there's some sour grapes on it. That's what I'm hearing out there and it's unfortunate. You know, one of the first things in the charter for us as a city to take care of is public safety first and foremost. And to say that even if council was to approve the budget with this amount of money in it, that you may be, it may be taken for you when times get tough. And yet, like I say, public safety is the priority from out of the charter. So I, you know, I commend you for getting up here and selling, trying to sell this to the taxpayers and I'm really sorry that law enforcement is being kicked the way they have over the past few years because we need you more than ever now. Thank you, Chief, for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Graham?
Chief, if two B doesn't pass, how many more officers will you be allowed to hire next year?
Five.
I think that's, that answers, that sums it up a lot. And then one other myth that I've been hearing is you kind of spoke to it tonight, but the, the funds that are left from the two B, they do not go back into the general fund. Is that correct?
No, they don't. They stay in, in the two B fund. In fact, you know, the, the money that's in, that's left over this year would, would be in there whether this tax passed or not. But the implications of it not passing are, to, to say it's, it's not critical would be an understatement.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much, Chief. I really appreciate it. All right. We're going to take a brief ten-minute recess before starting our regular meeting and I conclude this work session at seven fifteen PM.